So the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine for children aged 5 to 11 is now authorized for use. As we did when the vaccine was authorized for use with students aged 12 and above, we have made our small community aware of the vaccine availabilities, invites them to contact their medical provider to make the best choice decision for their own family. Our district stance remains that the decision to receive a vaccination is a personal, family choice, which should be made in conjunction with medical discretion. Therefore, we are not offering a vaccination clinic on site. We continue to be advised that there are no plans for the COVID vaccine to be mandated in consequence for our staff or students. Should this ever change at some point in the future, we would expect that the medical, religious, and philosophical exceptions would remain applicable as they are with all of the currently mandated vaccinations such as those for measles and chickenpox. Traditionally, the Biden administration's recent vaccine requirements for businesses with more than 100 employees has been suspended by a federal appeals court, and it's also been deemed not applicable to employees at PA Public Schools. So in case there are any laws that can happen about that before you get, uh, won't be there like that. So that, um, you have the recognition of visitors part of the agenda. So I'm gonna mix them up here again. Maybe I'll look at that. Mary Ann Hart, please.
My name is Mary Ann Hart. I'm on North Ann Street, Martinsburg. Um, I have a question, just to clarify. Did the Spring Co. board obtain an SRR grant? That's correct, okay. If so, I spent many hours this week looking up federal in-state school code and laws. And I found some information that I'm not sure that the board is aware of. In doing so, I found that the board has, in order to receive those funds, signed an agreement with the federal government agreeing to uphold current CDC health guidelines, which are subject to change as you referenced, and do require universal masking. On the PA Department of Education website, it does state this. ARP ASR requires school districts and charter schools to develop mitigating plans in line with the most recent CDC guidelines, with plans being updated every six months if needed, as I'm sure you're aware, you guys have done that. But the CDC website stipulates, regardless of the level of community transmission, it is critical that schools use in later prevention strategies. Five key prevention strategies are essential to safeguard their immune-inference protection and help to prevent COVID-19 transmission in schools. Number one, universal and correct use of masks, which the board has mandated for everyone in the district. There's physical distancing and washing your respiratory etiquette, late in maintaining healthy facilities, contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine. And this wasn't necessarily in my notes, but I did want to stop briefly and address the contact tracing. I don't know how aware the board is of this, but we received a letter. I believe it was from the Department of Education, but it might have been Department of Health, making us aware that two of the students in our household had their information compromised due to contact tracing, not comfortable at all with contact tracing. I, I, I object to that part of the district going along the CDC guidelines. And the reason for that is, obviously, the information can't be breached. I know I wasn't the only one. I believe there's some other parents or whoever that happened. I, two of my children had their names, birthdate, address, and social security numbers leaked. And that was because the district gave that information to the Department of Health, even though my children never had a positive COVID test. So I do object to those rights, to make that clear. So by accepting SRR funds, the board has kind of intimated that you made that choice yourself, but you really gave up that choice of whether or not to follow the CDC guidelines when you accepted that, those funds, contracts were signed. Just want everybody to be aware of that fact. In addition to having to follow CDC guidelines, which you're saying you won't mandate vaccines, but we all know that that's been known pipeline. Governors already promised to mandate them for the state of Pennsylvania when they become available. So they are available, and we're expecting that announcement from Wolf any day now. Since the board has not accepted exemptions for the masks, I'm personally very concerned that they also, and my manager's saying that you have to accept those mandates, but if the state decides to strike down mandates for this specific vaccine, I'm concerned that our children will be protected by the board. Also, of note, when I was looking at the SRR funds, the school district also agreed to do something else that they promised that they will not do or are not doing, but by accepting SRR funds, the board also agreed to develop systemic equity curriculum, which is critical race theory. The PA Department of Education website includes this in their guidelines. The school must first develop culturally responsive curriculum, and second, offer training on how bias and privilege affects classrooms in schools. And if you're not familiar with what systemic equity is, let me give you a quote. This is from, directly from the UCLA website. "Systemic Equality for Equity Addressing America's Legacy of Racism and Systemic Discrimination." "Since the nation's founding, the fabric of American society has been woven with equally racist policies that directly harm Black, Indigenous, and other people of color. These policies have led to an unequal system where marginalized communities have been systemically locked out of opportunities and jobs, education, and housing." One second, please. "Systemic equity is a racial justice agenda that seeks to address America's legacy of racism and systemic discrimination through advocacy efforts and legal strategies that aim to ensure equal access and opportunity for all." That is critical race theory. By taking SRR funds, this board has agreed to teach that in the school. If you do-
So the last time I addressed the board, not the previous meeting, the one prior to that, you know, we had some good conversation, and I thank you for that. Like, that's what I wanted. Made good inputs on your side, we spoke freely, as community members should who share similar values. Such exchanges of ideas, thoughts, and opinions do not and should not be so far. This ability to communicate restored a small portion of the hope that I'd lost over the past year. Given the results of the latest local election, specifically the school board, where three candidates ran a write-in campaign less than five weeks before election day, those three candidates had almost more votes on Election Day, in writing, than the 10-plus-year incumbents that they were running. So we can conclude that the community overwhelmingly aligns with the beliefs of these writing candidates. With that said, I'd like to extend you guys the opportunity to answer the call made by those you represent. The board president's alleged transparency and integrity are among its many aspirations. The community has spoken, and they would like you to stand by those claims. So I'm gonna give you the opportunity. Do you support the appointment of one of the three write-in candidates to the alleged empty seat that's gonna be carrying the chair?
We're gonna talk about at the end of the meeting, discuss the process of selecting a representative member.
There are certain procedures under the school code that have to be followed, so-
Right, yeah, they have to comply, which they did, right?
So what we're gonna do, if we're gonna set that up at the end of the meeting, is if there's things that happen, so it will be addressed at the end of the meeting, you know?
Oh, at the end of this meeting? Okay, great, okay. Just the process?
Correct.
Just the process? Oh, okay, well, so my question is, do any of you individually support writing in or, you know, nominating one of these writing candidates that was overwhelmingly supported by the community? If we had to, we had to vote. What is that?
You'll find that out when we have a vote. There's a, there's a process, I don't think any, so no, and I'm done packing for you. You can skip me here. We're here with this guy.
Can you just give me a brief way with respect to the board's policy and practice in relative to board leadership, the board's typical practice of doing to put it in a board in a new company, that's in the different practices in town, so the board would stop down.
So do you have any idea?
I don't think you have an opinion until I know. Like, I can't say who I would or would not support until I would know everyone that would even apply for the position.
Well, they, there's three that applied, and they've got more actual physical like-
I mean, the appointment, I get the appointment of the open position. So there's, there's an, there's gonna be an open position, obviously. So normally what happens, and I sit there, I apply for one, one time, and I'm turned down. So you have, I mean, last time I think we had four or five people come out for that position, so you can't determine before, before that happens of who you would pick.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking you to determine, I'm asking if you support that.
I support anyone that applies. I can't say who I would support, who I know who all the candidates would be. So what happens, I'll, I'll say how we did, is that anybody that wanted to be appointed would show up, they're, they're, they're given a presentation, they're asked questions, and then the board votes on who, and they vote on who should have that appointment. That's how, that's how it went, I know where I would turn.
Okay, so it's very informal, actually.
I mean, it's not that formal, I'm just saying I can't, I can't say I would or would not support someone until I know who the, who it is. But I support anyone who wanted to.
Yeah, but no regard to the, the latest election?
It's a dumb question, too. From, from the standpoint, it carries no weight. It can, it can, it can carry into a person's mind, but there's nothing that says you have to do that.
No, absolutely not. No colorblind person has to do anything to represent their constituents or the people they're representing.
I'm gonna make one more comment, and then with your comment, time is up. As much as you're sitting there telling us that, more people voted for, so if you're talking about a referendum, if it was really that, more people voted not, you know, to, for the other people on the board, so it doesn't, so it really doesn't mean anything. It doesn't carry the weight.
Really?
If it was real, I, let's just personal, my personal opinion, but we're moving on. Wolf, Wolf will have that.
You may query, "Why are we bringing this up when so much of the recent conversation has been focused on mask mandates?" Well, that is because the vaccine mandates are literally on the horizon. From the very beginning of this upheaval, you as a board said that you would not push people to force vaccinations, and yet you have caved to the pressure of the state at every turn, as well as the extreme minority that has, quote, "threatened you with lawsuits." But I have discovered that there is a reason that you have caved at every turn. It is because this illustrious board has given complete and total control of this school district over to the federal government. Why, you might ask, has this been done? It's because they wanted to receive the funds to the tomb of $1.3 million just from one source, and there are others, but this one is federal. And I think that this is what is keeping you from doing what we, the parents and patriots of this community, desire for our children. ESSR, also known as Elementary and Secondary School Education, I'm sorry, Emergency Relief Funds. In order to receive these funds, you all, this board, sitting on this table, have given control of our schools, our students, our children, to the federal mandates. And since you signed this contract, you are now legally bound to follow them. Why did you not tell everyone in this community about that little tidbit of information? You are legally bound by this. We are not. Ladies and gentlemen, this attitude of superiority and authoritarian overreach must come to an end, and you are the catalyst. We are, we are in the concerned community, have been bounced back and forth between you and our local representatives, as well as the ones in Harrisburg, and now back to you. No one wants to take responsibility for a definitive decision, and this is not just a local problem, it is nationwide. I grow tired of watching leaders misuse their power for whatever reason, and I grow tired of people filling leadership roles and then not leave. Leadership is a difficult task, there is no doubt about it, but if you lead your own way without consideration for those of you who are leading, you just make yourself a tyrant. We are supposed to stand against tyranny. So let's just be clear: we will never give up. We will never surrender, and we do not comply. Each of you has to choose what you will do, but we are going, but we are not going away, and we will be demanding answers for your actions. I have said it before, and I will say it again: give me liberty, or give me death. Thank you.
Have an open perspective of why you are here. You are here for the people of this community. You swore no under the Constitution, for it is our duty as the people of this community to make sure that this is upheld. And the masks were working so well, I just heard today that there were forty kids quarantined. Why have so many kids been quarantined with the mask wore? I heard there was one eighth brother sent out because he had his mask on, but he was still sent out because he was quarantined.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I hope you're asking any questions tonight, but I wanted to take the opportunity to share why I have been and will continue to be more involved. I admit I failed giving lip service to all the board members and our superintendent historically for everything that he's done, but in no means does that mean that it makes him disrespectful now to become more involved and question any government overreach, whether federal, state, or local. When I assume your position, for decisions now, or for the future of your children, that also doesn't mean that all of us showing up here to any given board meeting is questioning your integrity. When someone in authority or in position where trust has been given for the best interest of our children is posed a question, and there has been no response, I personally take that as disrespectful. We, the community, argue our employers, whether we hold a paid position or a volunteer board position. Several community members have posed questions in the past that have been completely gone unanswered. If it's because of advice given by the superintendent or solicitor, then open, truthful transparency went on a long way leading up to now. Yes, that's just my opinion, but one is definitely felt by a large portion of this community. Your job as our school board is to serve as the watchdog in keeping our district on track according to high educational standards, yes, but also setting policies that affect our children as well. In my opinion, your job just got harder as of the beginning of November 6th. The parents who found their voices and chose their line in the same aren't just helping to get quiet. We're coming back to the board meetings with expectations of a higher degree, not to cause dissension, but to hold you all accountable for today and the future of our parental rights and the control we are willing or not willing to give you. Those of you who retained your board seats in this recent election especially will unfortunately be held to much more scrutiny because of your silence mostly, but also in a challenge of your care for our children's best interests, words used by your fellow members who are at least somewhat willing to speak and respond in this social media realm. This presence, including mine, may have started because of a masking mandate, but has always been, at least for the majority of the speakers, without the control that we are willing or not willing to give our children.
Today Governor Wolf announced that the mask order is expected to expire on January 17th. At that time, the district will resume local control of masking requirement as outlined within our board's through compensation plan. Many thanks to the board for approving the recent resolution which was sent to Governor Tom Wolf, Secretary of Education Nowey Ortega, Acting Secretary of Health Allison Bean, Senator Judy Ward, and Representative Jim Gregory requesting the return of local control of the COVID-19 related measures. Congratulations to the Central Dragons football team who defeated Westmore Football for Friday. The Dragons now advance to the district championship against the Cambria Panthers this Friday at 7:00 PM at Altoona's Mansion Bar Stadium. The tickets are available through hometown picketing. Go Dragons! As you know, we continue to work through our long-term facility and maintenance project plan and a few of the projects that have been completed recently this fall in the 2021-22 budget include replacing all of the speakers at the Roaring Spring Athletic Field, changing the lights at the Athletic Field buildings to LED, changing the hallway and exterior lights and arms for elementary to LED, changing the, or replacing all of the lockers in the void locker room at Spring Cove Middle School, and upgrading the sound system in the auditorium at Central High School. Projects that are currently underway are the replacement of some of the classroom doors and three of the garage doors at Central High School, and Lucas is now working with the administrative team to make adjustments to the long-term plan, adding a new project and being secure reports for the 22-23 budget proposal. In the fields for this spring season, the Denver is currently engaging with in conversations with the district in regard to some additional projects for next year as well. Appreciate that. Governor Meehan and I participated in a mandatory PCCD grant monitoring meeting. The intent of this particular monitoring, particular monitoring event was to discuss the implementation of two of our PCCD grants, one of which supports the second police officer and the other which supports the purchase of school safety and security improvement measures. Additionally, the monitor asked questions to ensure that the funds were being utilized as proposed and verified with the related requirements such as basic SRA training for school police officers to be completed. The monitor was very satisfied with our responses and indicated that she had no concerns. Today, Mr. Gray participated in a mandatory homeless program monitoring meeting. The intent of that monitoring event was to ensure compliance with the requirements of the campaign event to homeless assistance app. I'm happy to report that the monitor was very satisfied with the evidence of compliance provided by Mr. Gray and indicated that she had no recommendations for improvement. There will be no citations. We thank Mr. Gray for his efforts, he's on the video call here, and for all the work that he prepared for, participated in the meeting event, that is, the monitoring event, that is, takes a significant amount of time. Spring Cove Elementary recently received a donation of winter hats from, and coats for students from Dr. Sean Lickum. We greatly appreciate his donation as well, and we'll put those items to good use for our students. As we had to share with the board last spring, our 2021 seniors were the first students to take the assessment of civic knowledge, which is now required under the school code prior to graduation. As reported previously, the test was incorporated into our Principals and Democracy course at Central High School. This month, we are required to report the aggregate results of that test to the PA Department of Education, and we are proud to report that 100% of our students successfully passed the continually required civic test, so that's what we'll be reporting to the state, and that 10 of those students passed with a public store score, earning them a certificate from the state in their diploma folder acknowledging their achievement. Congratulations to the class of 2021 and to all of our social studies teachers using instruction on the academic standards for students and government contributed to these students' success. And then on tonight's agenda, we have a recommendation for the purchase of Membing subscriptions as resources for vocabulary instruction for English Language Arts at Central High School. It appears to cost these licenses will be incorporated into our art professor grant. Mrs. Thompson is present at tonight's meeting to provide the board with information regarding this resource when you reach that agenda item. Any questions from the board?
Thank you. Okay, educational program. Just have one item. It is item A, additional instructional software, and that's the Membing.
Good evening. I do want to provide you with as much detail that we have about the Membing platform. I do have a handout for all of you, so you don't have to hand it on any of us, so we'll give it to you as soon as I finish. Essentially, what is the Membing? Membing is an online personalized and differentiated vocabulary instruction program that helps students with long-term retention of vocabulary. Membing encourages strong encoding by providing many ways to learn a word, which ultimately improves reading comprehension and writing skills for our students. Mrs. Green McLaughlin, our sophomore English teacher, is currently piloting the Membing platform with 54 of our sophomore English students. It's a 30-day pilot program which is free of charge. So essentially, how this came about was early in the school year, Mrs. McLaughlin heard from one of her colleagues about the Membing program. She took a detailed look at that program, then came to me, we collaborated about what it was and what it could possibly improve our students. We then provided Dr. Baker with a request for our pilot of that program, which was approved for a 30-day pilot. So 30 days into that program, Mrs. McLaughlin has found great success with those 54 students that are using it, and I want to kind of tell you a little bit about why that is. Why Membing? So knowing the meaning of words and being able to use them is an essential skill for both reading comprehension and effective writing, as I've said. Researchers have long known that teaching individual words is essential, but it's even more important to build a student's word consciousness. So to do this, this is what the Membing platform does. There's a memory engine within that website that schedules learning and repetition of words to ensure that what the students learn with those words is not forgotten. And a student that I talked with today that was showing me a little bit more about their use of Membing said that it comes back to words. So if there's something that's forgotten about that word, it comes back to it multiple times as the repetition and practice happens. Membing provides more than seven different ways to learn a word, so with engaging content such as audio, video, word pictures, Membing's game-like format succeeds in overcoming short attention. So for students that kind of have a hard time maybe writing down 20 vocabulary words and definitions and then sentences, this is a short chunks of time, so it helps with their attention. There's differentiated instruction limits. So there's a tool with the program that for each and every student is based on their existing skill level, and the speed of progress is based on that individual student. And so how does that work? There is, in the very beginning of it, there is a brief diagnostic assessment, and that's what sets the student on their individual learning path. And like I said, it displays words in a multimodal approach. There's definitions of vocabulary word, they're providing the word in context, still in a sentence, in a paragraph. There's memory books with pictures and videos, which helps to, you know, embed that for the learner. There's examples of the words given, sentences, breaking down of the word to the root words. So again, that helps with the student's retention of the word. There's a word tree and synonyms, so, you know, as the student's presented with the word, they're learning it multiple different ways. Quizzes are engaging and they're fun, and they focus on genuine understanding of the way words are actually used. So how would we like to use Membing at the high school? We would like to, you know, essentially have it create that individual learning path for the student. 10-minute sessions four times a week, so again, they're very short chunks of time, and that's what Membing recommends. It's not something that a student sits in front of their Chromebook for like an entire period, it's very short 10-minute chunks of time. And that's been proven to be the most effective in keeping students' attention and them really learning the words over time. But additionally, I want to make sure the board is aware that this is not the DL and NDL of the vocabulary program. Mrs. McLaughlin, as older English teachers, are teaching vocabulary instruction within the context of their story, novel, poem, and nonfiction article in the classrooms. So this is like a supplemental vocabulary program. So I've had a chance myself, as I've researched it and gone in during the pilot, to see our students in action with the program. I've seen all learners in the classroom engaged with it. Processing through the program is very simple, with a couple clicks, it gives them immediate feedback on how they've done, and when they reach the end of the 10-minute session, they get a, their profile comes up with their success, so they get to see how much individual progress they made. Mrs. McLaughlin, yourself started out really happy with the program and what she saw from the pilot, and really pleasantly surprised with how the students have engaged with Membing activities and the short training sessions. And after doing it for 30 days, she's really related on the progress that she's seen with them because from a purpose factor, she gets reports on the each and every student's progress and whatever anything else in progress. Any questions?
Sure, yes, or paper.
Three ten is current.
Next would be the finance and legal.
All right, May, the financial reports are on the federal fund in September and October of 2021, and due service for August and September of 2021. Right and B, the disturbance, we have a general fund for September and October 2021, and due service for August and September of 2021.
That's the new board. Yes, that was part of the installation of that, and that was totally.
And a question I had, and I had, Professor, Mr. Paul, also, for permanent management and support department, how we're doing with that, and is it on the budget, you know, or what?
Yeah, we review that today, we meant to, and that looks like you're on track with that one number.
Okay.
All right, and C, agreements, contracts pending any divisions required by the solicitor in over the district, and appointing their two junior head providers. Right and D, the parent's consideration, exertion, request. And, right and B, delegation of various football jerseys to restore that.
The quarterback doesn't change the class, they might donate the jerseys to people graduating and part their gifts from them, and the jerseys that they have are still available, so they would purchase new jerseys to replace the ones that they are buying to give the kids that are going to receive. So we would still have a uniform to be given.
What do you expect of the next activity?
Item A, we'll have a hiring of a winter coach. Item B, addition of a single game stipend for the junior high basketball officials.
Oh, you also judicially.
Yeah. I didn't miss.
The.
Okay. Item B, will be additional game workers for the 2021-22 school year. Sorry about that.
National Commander Voting for Brown, personnel, director.
Item A, we have one articulation. Item B, we have the hiring of two paraprofessionals. And item C, we will have additional volunteers for 2021-22.
All right, so before we go, Mr. Gomerak keeps not here, but in the elect, he'd be one, two seats, and he only kept one of them. And so the board will need to appoint someone into that position, and I'm suggesting that we schedule that for our reorganization, so that we can advertise for people that want to apply to that, and then we get a handle on that, and we will have that energy process at the board at that meeting, and hopefully appoint someone coming out of that process. There's a lot more to get into, but that's the highest level of what, if we're in agreement here, we can get that notification out. Now, the thing is, what we won't know until Mr. Gomerak formally accepts it, whether it be the two-year or four-year, I assume that position comes before we receive, but we'll know that night, we're either putting someone into the two-year or four-year seat, and we'll, we'll then go through that process on that thing. So we'll have a set of questions, and we went through this about eight months ago. So that reorganization is on the sixth, so December 6th. Right. Okay, so that, I mean, that is going to be the process, if the candidate is interested in the process, then the board will be the process on the issue of, any questions on the process? That's right. Public process is touching on candidates.
And then the person that would be elected would be nominated from the board?
That's correct.
And then voters take it.
So nomination, if it is a second, we'll get a vote, if, and, you know, if that's not the person you want, you broke out, and then if that will pass or fail at that point, and if it fails, then we'll open the board for an additional nomination, and if it proceeds that way, do you have a passing vote? No, no, so, oh, oh, I'm sorry. So Mr. Bill's question is, let's, if, under the scenario where Mr. Gomerak would take the two-year term, the appointment actually would not be for four years, that appointment would only be until the next election cycle, so that is a good point, and that's sort of what happened with this two-year process as well. So you're actually right, the person appointed really only has two years regardless of people they would have to run again, if that makes sense, if that makes sense to you. All right. Make sure, vote if you're ready.
I just want to check, see, has there been any supply issues with, like, the food surveys, are you hearing about that increasing, like, they're having more trouble getting things? I know, just being involved in the restaurant industry, is it becoming more and more difficult? Prices going through the ceilings, you want a lot of things, I mean, there's plenty of times on the weekends we don't have what we normally have, I just wondered how that's affecting us all.
It's crazy here, well, we have had more of this here than we have had next, we've been excellent though about reaching out to other vendors, making substitutions. We don't always have what we want to offer, in a buck we have something to offer, and they've done a lot of different things to get us supplies, whether we, like, different vendors we used before.
Right.
And it has been many, many substitutions in the way that we've had to have, but we're getting through it, prices are higher too, but we're looking to do anything we want to do, just we're stealing back on the resources, we're pushing.
Good question. I asked that question a couple weeks ago, and I think you responded in our memo, it's absolutely, you know, yeah.
This from, everything from food to paper napkins, too, I mean, it's just, it's unbelievable what's happening, and it's always just so scary. My grandson told me yesterday that we don't have toasted cheese sandwiches in the basement anymore because you can't sneeze into the basement. You know, students' reception is something, it's, you know, I found it humorous, but I do know, just from working in a restaurant as well, that it's been very, very challenging. And it's hard to tell guests that we don't have, so I can imagine there are students asking.
In all respects, obviously, you've seen that merge, so that's why we order a lot of things ahead of time, we've been asking, we're doing great work, and saying, hey, I'm going to be running out of something, hey, I have a time. That also makes it harder with payments, because, like, usually, you know, we get everything, we check it in, we pay the invoice, now sometimes we're getting partial shipments, and they're making partial payments, we're holding invoices, so the rest comes. So, like, people are touching invoices all the time, sometimes, the same things like that, so, they make everybody drop twice a card, but we're doing the rest, and we're just answering all of those, making substitutions, you get the vendors, that's very, we're very excited.
Thank you. How are the bus drivers, the situation with bus drivers?
Right now, we're okay.
I know the one that we all, I know I have on the.
And we did get, the state sent out a letter to anybody that hasn't seen an electric state, anybody that is interested in working here, we got that information, they called them, we got anybody really in front of you, so I heard, you know, but, I mean, we are trying not to, we need to contract, we need to have time.
We need to really promote, I don't know, I don't think that's going to work, but we had four of us in the last two weeks, sometimes, red light. And I stand when we're at red lights, and I know, that's a good thing, we really worked on that, and moved like the police and did all that, but it's, it's very scary out there when it actually happens, so, you know, I would, I was just the way, we want to be cautious and much, because, like, because it's five hundred, three steps on the road now, especially at four o'clock in the afternoon, one drive.
I'm glad you're agreeing on that, the lifetime time is more, the people are more, and that's where everything, every bit of information we can get, we make a report to try, they get, they have to investigate, and sometimes they're talking, oh, you can't go and get their license.
No, you can't, I know this too much, but.
We were trying to make sure to investigate, and the reports are turning into, it's always been really hard, all of those.
It's always been a reminder to follow those rules. And I just also want to say thank you for the software issue. It's sort of affecting the fact that, I guess, the community doesn't realize that all the years in our software, and how much is covered by security and what we do to protect the children, the safety of the children. And I'm glad that you explained that last week, because that's what we have to do. We're not going to last month, we're going to last. And how much likes go up with the board here? And I'm sorry that happens just in the session, but it is very important to know that it's over, it's taken, that nothing is replaced.
I just want to wish the solicitor happy birthday.
Thank you.